Good evening. The January 16th Agenda Meeting of the Milltown, oh, sorry, January 16th, 2018. This is the first time I said that. Agenda meeting of the Milltown Borough Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Here.
Councilwoman Farkas?
Here.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Present.
Councilwoman Lagotti?
Here.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have six present.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the meeting's statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting, filing, forwarding of a copy of the same to the official Borough newspapers, Home distribute and Starler's Publishing Companies on January 11th, 2018. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed.
Thank you. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by a salute to our nation's flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. First on the agenda this evening is Rescue Squad Presentation.
I'm Don Holliner, 15 Richter Avenue, President of the Milltown Rescue Squad. I'd like to thank the mayor, council for affording us this opportunity to explain our new cost recovery plan in this public forum so that all residents can receive this information directly from the Milltown Rescue Squad. We'll also be setting up links on our website that will have this presentation you're about to see, along with the questions and answers to frequently asked questions. This new revenue stream has become necessary for us to keep up with current costs without asking for any additional expenses to be incurred by residents or the borough. We're confident that these additional funds will help us in continuing our high level of volunteer emergency medical service for the residents of Milltown. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce the representatives from the medical billing company that we have contracted to handle medical insurance billing for the Milltown Rescue Squad. It's Mr. James Jones and Ivy Alterton in the front row there, from Cornerstone Admin Systems, ambulance billing experts.
Thank you. I think I'll come over here where you're standing. My name is Jim Jones, actually, no relation to the infamous. We are out of Harrisburg, PA, and we're very fortunate to thank Milltown for entering into this agreement with us. We're looking forward to entering into this. And without further ado, let's just talk a little bit about what a cost recovery program is. Today's agenda, we're going to talk about, first, the financial crisis that EMS is facing, which is really what's driving a lot of the rescue squads to enter into cost recovery programs. We're going to talk about understanding what the program is, how it affects the citizens here, residents and non-residents, and understanding the slight differences. And we'll talk about some common concerns and misconceptions, and we'll also open the floor for any questions that anyone might have. So to begin here, the financial crisis, the cost to provide care, I don't have to speak for these guys, they can tell you, is astronomical and skyrocketing, whether it's recruitment, retention, training, equipment, vehicle, building maintenance. These costs are going up and up and up, not to mention the importance of community engagement and the costs that are involved in that and outreach. So those costs are not going down, they are only going up, and it's within that environment that we're looking at the growing gap between the cost to provide service and the reimbursement. So Medicare and Medicaid in particular have what are called fee schedules. So if it costs the squad, say, $500 to turn the wheels on a transport, that doesn't mean that they get paid $500 if they bill Medicare. They would actually get billed what Medicare says they're going to pay, okay? So that's what's called the fee schedule, and the rest of that money is uncollectible. So this billing program, it's important to understand that just because we're implementing it, it doesn't necessarily solve all of the financial issues that are going on. Medicaid in New Jersey is another example. Medicaid will pay $58 on an ambulance transport, 58. So it kind of puts it in perspective a little bit, even though we're entering into this program, this program is only one part of the solution. You have challenging payer tactics. What we mean by that is some commercial payers will actually, they won't necessarily pay you the way that they should. Sometimes they'll send a partial payment to you, and you have to fight for the rest. Sometimes, if you, depending on the situation, they might actually send a check to the patient, and then we have to contact the patient so that they don't inadvertently cash that check and keep it, and it just kind of delays the process of getting paid. There are a multitude of different ways and challenges that commercial payers can put out there, but that's why there are companies, like a cornerstone, to do that full-time on behalf of the squad, because they do not have the resources to really do that for themselves. And then there's something on here called temporary bonus add-ons. So with the government shutdown looming at the end of last year, there were temporary bonus extensions that were included in the legislation that gave a little bit of a bump, about 2% to 3% bump for the transports that ambulance companies were running, but that expired at the end of last year. And unless the new legislation is enacted, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe the recess ends, or they have to do this by the 19th, it has to happen really quickly in order for them to re-implement that, then that's another drop in payments that the EMS industry is going to see. So interesting challenges, costs going up, payment not where it needs to be, but we're fighting that, that fight. And so that's kind of the basic situation we're in. And so looking at understanding what cost recovery is, a cost recovery program is primarily designed to capture insurance revenue, available insurance revenue that's already earmarked for this reason, okay? At the same time, we're looking to minimize patient interaction. Most of these payers, commercial insurances or federal entitlement programs, Medicaid, they already allocate benefits for ambulance transportation, okay? So by submitting claims for reimbursement, the goal is simply to mitigate some of the financial strain that the squad is going through. The way that this happens, to give you a kind of a behind-the-scenes of the mechanics of this program, the EMTs, the paramedics, they go on calls, they complete what are called patient care reports, okay? These patient care reports are then provided to us. Our specialists will read these patient care reports and translate the facts that are included in them into codes, and those codes equate to reimbursement, basically, put it on a claim and submit that electronically, and then the insurance will either pay that or possibly deny it, and then we have to appeal that. Generally, a payment or a denial will come to us, and this is what I was talking about a little bit earlier, but there are times when a patient might receive that. When that happens, it is important the patient is actually obligated to forward that on to the squad or to us so that we don't have to get into a back-and-forth. A lot of times, it's just patients not realizing that that check is, belongs to the squad. This is a rare occurrence, but it's important to keep that in mind, that it can happen. So residents and non-residents, let's take a quick look at what we mean by this. A resident is defined simply as a taxpayer residing within municipal boundaries or dependent of such a person who resides in the same domicile. And if you are a resident, your insurance would be billed, and any out-of-pocket cost share would be waived. This routine waiver of the cost-sharing amount is enabled through the residential tax support and is in keeping with the general guidance that is afforded to us by the Office of Inspector General, that issue what are called advisory opinions on the practice. And the prevailing wisdom is that this is how the, you know, tax-supported squads do their billing programs. If a patient is not a resident, okay, we will still bill their insurance. If there's a balance, we will request payment in full, basically up to three times, and provide multiple options to the patient to satisfy that debt, whether that's payment plans or any number of different options, including interest-free payment plans. Again, if the patient is not a resident and also lacks insurance, we will, again, send up to three requests for payment, okay, and offer the patient multiple options to help satisfy that debt. And again, that includes interest-free payment plans, as well as a very handy online payment site just for patients, make it very easy. So some common concerns and misconceptions. Does the patient's ability to pay affect care? We hear that sometimes. It's important also to understand in New Jersey, more and more squads are forced to do this, and so these are the questions that are being asked. A lot of squads are already billing, but many still are not, and so these are really common questions. Will my premiums increase? Does the squad still need financial support and donations? Will patients be hassled by the billing company? That's a fair question. First answer here is, does a patient's ability to pay affect care? And the simple answer is no, absolutely not. A person's ability to pay has zero bearing on the commitment to serve by the squad. In fact, the squad is legally obligated to provide the same level of care regardless of whether you're billing or not billing. Well, premiums increase. So there's actually no evidence that premiums go up as a result of ambulance claims. Ambulance claims actually represent a very small percentage of overall health care billing. It's less than, I think, a percent. It's extremely small when you look at the big picture. And the fact that most insurance policies already cover provisions to pay for ambulance transports speaks to the fact that these companies are anticipating paying for these and incurring these expenses, and so we're not seeing any corollary sort of result to an increase in premiums. Does the squad still need municipal financial support and donations? Absolutely. The picture we're trying to paint here is that the billing program in and of itself is not the ultimate solution. It is a tool to use to try and provide continuity in providing patient care. So the quick answer there is yes. It's usually a concern of, if we start a billing program, will people perceive that we no longer need money? We're trying to make it clear that we will still need money. That probably will not go away, and it's simply the fact that it costs more and more to provide the care. Will patients be hassled by the billing company? No, that is not our intent, that is not the billing program's intent. The billing program is actually designed to minimize patient interaction, okay? So the extent of this interaction depends in part on whether or not the EMS providers on the call are able to obtain the insurance information while on the call or at the hospital. They would then provide that to us, and if we have it and we don't actually have to reach out to the patient, then if it's a resident in particular, we would never even need to contact the patient at all. We just bill their insurance, and the rest, ultimately, the bill goes away. So in a perfect world, that's how the system would work. We know that this isn't a perfect world, you can't always get that information upfront. So there will be times when we receive a patient care report, but we don't have accurate information. We have to send basically what we would call a community resident letter to a resident asking for their updated information. And again, if information's needed, that's what we would do, we would send that letter. In the case of non-residents, we would issue up to three invoices, just asking for payment. And it's important to note as well, on these invoices and on these letters, it provides room for any insurance, primary, secondary, they can provide a consent signature if we weren't able to get one during the call. Very intuitive, and lots of information in there for the patient to help us adjudicate the claim. Okay, so let's talk for a minute about advanced life support. Milltown's a basic life support rescue squad. If you see Robert Wood coming by with a paramedic, that's advanced life support, okay? And so we're looking at, for instance, chest pain. Oh, let me go back here. So hospitals employ paramedics who provide advanced life support ALS on higher-level emergencies. One of those examples would be chest pain. Milltown receives most of its ALS care from Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas, or Robert Wood, we'll say, RWJ, and that service is actually called Paramedic Intercept. So at this point, it's important we take a time to understand a common practice in New Jersey when billing an ALS-level claim to Medicare and how this affects patients. When a paramedic from Robert Wood is on the call and the patient has Medicare, Robert Wood will bill that claim, not Milltown. I think I'm too close to the mic. This is because Medicare only accepts one bundled claim for ALS-level services. To protect Medicare recipients from receiving a direct paramedic bill, a paramedic intercept bill, which can be upwards of $1,000 if not more, Milltown will enter into a bundled billing agreement with Robert Wood. This means Milltown will generate less revenue for such calls, but that is an acceptable loss considering it means less financial risk for the patients. ALS calls pay more, because it's more drugs involved, more procedures, more skills. That stated, Milltown cannot prevent Robert Wood from balance billing if a balance exists. This is the difference between the hospital systems and the rescue squads. The rescue squads, because they receive tax support, they can actually waive the balances for the residents. The hospitals are not permitted to do that. And so the hospitals are asking squads, please let us bill so that we can recoup something more out of this, we'll give you a negotiated amount, which is great for the hospital, protects the patient, but ultimately, we can't prevent them from balance billing residents or non-residents, okay? So a balance, a balance bill on a Medicare trip is basically your 20% copay, okay? It's not a huge amount, but it's some, but it's much less than what they would receive being billed directly for an $800 to $1,000 trip. So to be clear, if a Medicare recipient, whether it's a resident or non-resident, receives ALS care and a balance remains after Medicare pays, that patient will be billed. It's just important to be clear about that, and that's nothing that Milltown can prevent. This is actually in the patient's best interest. And any claim-related questions for those types of calls would, by necessity, have to go to the billing office for Robert Wood. We would not be in a position to really speak to those claims, we wouldn't be processing So for ALS-level claims where the patient has commercial insurance, the rules are a little bit different. Commercial insurances actually accept separate bills for the basic life support. They also accept separate bills for the advanced life support. And so this is because commercial payers tend not to require bundled billing, and that's great, because this enables Milltown to protect its residents from out-of-pocket billing. So if Milltown can bill for these trips, again, if it's a resident, we just bill the insurance and we waive the balance, so that's a great thing for the residents. So we just flew through that, it was like 10 minutes, I wasn't sure how long that was going to take, but to learn more about EMS, obviously, we have questions and answers here, so we kind of breezed through that. Those were the, sort of, the big talking points, but we encourage any questions that might come up, if anybody has any questions. And again, this PowerPoint will be available. We're also going to put some narration over it so that the squad can play this on their website for people to visit it and have any questions that could be answered. And as well, if people are asking questions, we can, we'll draft up sort of a FAQ sheet as well with all the standard stuff to make sure that anyone's concerns are addressed accordingly.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah?
I got a little confused, and I'll turn my mic back on, because I think it was interference.
Okay.
I got a little confused when you were talking about the ALS billing in Medicare versus Milltown. So if you have a common or commercial insurance company, Horizon Blue Cross, Bushido, or one of those, and it's not Medicare, then Milltown can bill for it? Does that mean that Milltown can then provide the services for ALS calls? Or it's still Robert Wood, but then Milltown can at least bill independently of Robert Wood?
That's correct. Robert Wood would also bill its paramedic intercept claim to that same payer.
So, Don, maybe you can help me out here. In an ALS case, and I don't mean to get anyone confused with Lou Gehrig's or, you know, ALS.
Right.
But the advanced level treatment cases, we're responding first. So first responder, you get there, and then you determine whether or not it has to be through Robert Wood or us?
That's not entirely true, I think.
Mr. Hunter, sorry. Can you just come to a microphone, one of them?
Yeah, currently, the way that works is EMS dispatches go here to headquarters, but then it gets transferred to Robert Wood Johnson, their dispatch center, and they determine whether or not it's an ALS call. So they get dispatched essentially the same time as we do, but we do still, you know, probably 80% of the time, we get there first.
Okay.
But we're just going to be billing for the transport section. It's not bundled, like the other, the other thing with Medicare and Medicaid.
Right.
You know, we'll bill for the transport and they'll bill for ALS.
Okay, so they'll perform like onsite services to stabilize the patient?
And they come with us. They have to stay with us, especially if they start an IV or any other kind of treatment.
It has to stay with them.
Yeah, so they ride in with us, well, one of them rides in with us, and the other one has to drive their vehicle back, too.
Okay, okay.
That's pretty much how that works.
And then, we keep talking about transport, does that include other cost codes associated with providing an IV, providing ibuprofen, sutures, things like that? Or is it just, here's your blanket fee for simply a transport, anything under the sun with the exception of a certain level of care?
Yeah, I'm going to say, in 2004, the Medicare implemented the fee schedule now, where it's essentially a base rate and mileage. And that base rate accounts for all the line item charges that you might have. It used to be that you would line item charge for that stuff, they no longer pay separately for that. So what the squads have to do is take into account what their, really, their average cost is for those transports and determine what they're going to charge for that to cover, you know, those costs, but also ultimately to try and make up for the losses that they're going to incur. Like, I don't necessarily know what it costs for Milltown to go out, but on average, I'll tell you about $700, $800 to provide ALS service. And if you think Medicare's fee schedule for a basic life support trip pays about $400. But Milltown, if it's Medicare trip, they don't, they don't see all of that. Remember, the hospital's billing that, and so they're going to negotiate a certain amount out of that. So you're looking at, it costs us X amount, but we only get this, and then if it's Medicaid, it's less than $60. So really, the ideal scenario is that you have more and more people with private insurance, commercial insurance, because that'll help you to mitigate some of those losses. Commercial insurances tend to pay you what you will charge them, for the most part. There are some difficult things they do, we talked about that, but overall, if you charge them $500, target them at $700, $1,000, they will generally pay that.
Okay, so my wife's in healthcare, so I'm going to ask a question, and maybe I'm off topic, but does it matter if in-network versus out-of-network when it comes to balance billing? Or you say, hey, you're in-network, and that's it, that you take what we give you, and that's all there is to it?
Yeah, so in EMS, if you're an in-network provider, you accept what they pay you, and you've agreed to that by contract. Most of the ambulance squads, especially, unless you're talking about large transport services who do a lot of scheduled transports, they tend to be participating providers, but 911 providers tend not to be, because it's not in their financial best interest to accept a much lower amount. If you look at it this way, if you look at a Blue Cross that's going to pay me $700, why would I accept only what Medicare would pay for that same trip? But it's a constant sort of challenge of, patients don't always understand, sometimes it's called surprise balance billing, and it's kind of hurts the EMS reputation because it's not their fault that they have to often balance bill people. In this case, we don't have to, because it's residents, and we have the protection that the advisory opinions offer us, so we can actually waive those out-of-pocket expenses for your residents. For non-residents, though, again, the situation is, we do, we make requests for the balance payment. So EMS is kind of caught in between. They're not actually considered, it's considered a transport benefit more than it's considered health care in the eyes of the government, and so it's hard to get the legislation pushed through. It's why the reimbursement legislation that we saw, it just expired. So we have advocacy agencies that are trying to push for more awareness, but it's hard to get that awareness raised, and it's just hard to get our voices heard, especially insurance lobbies are very powerful, as they should be, but we need more and more voices for EMS, or, you know, explaining what they're up against. One of the things we'd love to see is more payers actually start to pay for non-transport benefits. Aetna recently did that. They'll pay for treatment, no transport in some states where they're at. So we have some clients up in New York who are going to benefit off of that. And I can't tell, these guys could tell you, there's a lot of times they get called out there, and a patient may not need transported, but they have to respond, but that's cost them, you know, so.
And that kind of goes back to my question about, you know, when you're doing a transport billing, is everything under the sun? So if you go out and treat, and the person's okay, the patient's all right, and they don't have to be transported, do we have an ability to bill for that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the squad, this, the program's so new, we haven't looked at implementing charges for the array of different services. We're rolling it out as a charge for transport, and we want to see how the program goes, evaluate it. Many of our clients do charge for other types of service, whether it's a treat no transport, whether it's a refusal, you know, there's all kinds of different scenarios where companies are just trying to recoup a little bit more than just losing everything on that call. But, so it's hard to say, in New Jersey, I have not seen a lot of squads doing billing for non-transport, but to be quite honest with you, the more these programs go on and mature, I think you will see that.
I just have one more question, and then, sorry for taking everyone else's time, but you did indicate that a signature would be required.
Yeah.
If you have a patient that's unconscious or lopped off their left hand and can't sign.
Yep. So the rules around what's called an assignment of benefits form or a patient consent form, the best option, if you can have it, is the patient to sign, but there are times when the patient is unable to sign. So the next option is a person who's responsible for the patient, and if that person's available, great. If that person's not available, then someone at the receiving facility can sign. So there's a sort of a decision tree. (Inaudible)
Where I'll just project. So I lost my turn of thought. Signatures have different hierarchies, so basically, it's almost like a chain of custody for a patient.
It is.
So at some point, someone will be able to sign for it.
Yes, correct. And ultimately, if we are unable to get a signature from any of these during the transport or during the incident itself, in the subsequent sort of letter invoicing process? Our community resident letter actually doubles as a consent form, that, again, somebody who is responsible for the patient's care can sign on their behalf. Yep.
I have a couple quick questions. Indulge me in a game of now and later. Right now, if I'm in the yard, I roll my ankle, I can't drive to the hospital, I call 911, they dispatch Milltown. Squad picks me up, takes me to the hospital, I don't get a bill. Squad pays, covers the cost. If I'm in the yard, raking the leaves, get chest pains, I go down, I call 911. That falls under advanced service. They come, Robert Wood Johnson comes, they take me into the hospital, and I would get a bill from them presently?
Well, you would, but.
I would.
But we'll pay.
Right, yeah, well, yeah, well, whether, well, whether you guys take me or not presently, you're not getting anything.
Correct.
All right? But they, but they would send me a bill.
A big bill.
Right, for ICU or whatever, okay? So that's what's going on presently now, okay? Later would be, I'm in the yard, I roll my ankle, I can't, I can't get up and drive myself to the hospital, I call, Milltown Squad is dispatched, they come, they take me into the hospital to get x-rays. I would get, I wouldn't get a bill. I'd give them my insurance card, sign my name, because I could. Then my insurance would send them a check, or you folks a check, to give to them, and that would be the money that my insurance company allows, it might be $200 or something. So that would be the last I hear from you. I don't get a bill for another $1,000 or whatever. You guys just accept whatever my insurance company is going to pay you, and that's the end of it, okay? Then the other part would be, is I'm out, again, raking leaves, chest pains, I go down, Milltown shows up, the advanced care shows up, the advanced care guys get in the Milltown rig, they take me in, I give them, they get my, all my insurance information or whatever, I sign my name, then Milltown could get some of the money, that's what the bundling is, and then I'd still get a bill from the, from the ICU, just like normal. So basically, what it is, the way I read it, is that what's going to happen is, in the future, the Milltown Rescue Squad will accept whatever is given to them by their insurance, by your insurance carrier. Chances are, you'll never hear from them again, they're not sending, they're not trying to get more out of you, they're just looking to take what's on the table that the insurance companies put out there to say, if you need emergency medical care and take into the hospital, this is what it is. So nothing really changes for the advanced care. They're going to get their money whether now or later. The difference is, is that now, whatever money that the insurance company puts on the table, Milltown now is going to say, thank you, and take it, to help take care of the costs of running the rescue squad. Is that correct?
Generally speaking, that sounds pretty correct. Yeah, the goal here is to simply capitalize on money that's already earmarked for the squad.
Correct.
That currently, they're leaving on the table. And when it comes to the hospital billing, that is, again, specific to Medicare and Medicare's rules, the squad is willing to enter into that agreement to basically protect the patients from getting that bigger bill.
Right.
And also to help the hospital to recoup more money than it otherwise would, because it, put yourself in the hospital's shoes, what's the likelihood that you get paid when you invoice somebody out of pocket $1,000 for a paramedic intercept? They might not be able to pay that. And so a lot of those calls probably end up going to collections, and so this can help to avoid all of that.
Right. I know years ago, I was in a automobile accident, and a surrounding town took me into Robert Wood Johnson, and I got a bill for like $1,500.
Yeah.
Now, I'm glad they showed up, I'm glad they got me. I mean, I was only a couple feet out of Milltown, I wish they would have called the Milltown Squad. But I, look, we've been so blessed in this town by having a volunteer squad forever, and, you know, they come around in May and accept our envelopes, and I understand it's not enough. I- And I understand it's not enough. I see that the time invested, I see the cost of the rigs is astronomical. The cost of keeping their building up is tremendous. The utilities alone are very expensive. I've had conversations with members of the squad and their plight in trying to stay solvent and to be able to serve. And quite honestly, I don't, I'm happy to see this. I'll be honest with you. I'm happy to see this because I understand that if they cannot function, the municipality is gonna have to pick this up. So, that's gonna mean paid EMS maybe. I don't want to get into that. I can't do enough and thank the squad for what they do. Alls I can say is, I think it's a tremendous thing. Get the money off the table, keep working, I'll keep giving you my envelope come May, and keep doing a great job. I hope that the residents in town see the value of this and understand that they're not coming to take anything that is yours. They're only taking what the insurance companies are offering them for the services that they render, and that will help them. And I, really, I understand too, that, you know, we still, as residents, we're still gonna have to make our contributions. Because the more financially solid they are, the better service they're gonna be able to give us all. So, I fully support it. I think it's a great idea.
That's exactly my sentiments. The intention is that we will still have a fund drive, and we will still have to get the stipend from the borough that we get every year. We're just not asking for an increase, because we're gonna use that stipend to write off the waivers. And we have to do that to make this whole thing work and to make it legal. So, we need both things that we're still getting, but obviously, that, those two things put together is no longer enough. We're driving around in a 1994 ambulance, a 2,000 ambulance, and the newest one that we just, well, it will be paid for by the end of this year, because we had to roll it into our mortgage. So, you know, it's not like we have money rolling around. It's necessary to have all three streams of revenue to get us where we want to be. And obviously, none of us take any money. We're all volunteers, so it's just for the building and the vehicles and the service training. Our insurance is pretty outrageous. It's a little bit more than what the borough gives us, is how much our insurance costs. I don't want to throw numbers around, but that's a fact. So, that's a huge chunk, and we appreciate your support.
I have two questions, I'm sorry. My first question is, just because everybody who's watching and will watch it in the future, you made a differential between a resident and a non-resident. Can you explain to me what the difference is?
Yep. So, mentioning a little bit earlier, the Office of Inspector General has issued what are called advisory opinions specific to EMS and what we would call the routine waiver of cost-sharing amounts for residents. And made a very important point here about the tax support is designed to offset the waivers. And so, they have to actually monitor how much they're routinely wavering to make sure that it does not exceed their tax support. The difference between residents and non-residents is, non-residents are not providing the tax support. And so, in those cases, we actually do issue balance bills requesting that they pay the balance. That's the primary difference here. With residents, we're billing their insurance and then writing off anything that they would otherwise owe. Non-residents, we're still billing their insurance, but we're also asking them to make up the balance when they owe something.
So, within Milltown, someone who's not paying taxes, let's say, somebody who is renting, is considered a non-resident as far as this particular... No? All right. Can somebody correct me?
That's a good question, and I'm still thinking about it. But, I mean, they are residents of Milltown, so somehow, the money they pay their landlord becomes, you know, the tax.
Covers that.
Anybody that has a Milltown address, basically, that lives here.
Okay.
But like, anybody that gets in an accident on Main Street that's from South Brunswick or something is gonna get billed.
Perfect. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you. Now, my second question, I don't even know if I'm allowed to ask this question, but I'll ask it, and you can, you won't insult me if you say we can't answer that question.
Okay.
How does your company factor into this as far as economically? Is it charged percentage-wise or what, just what you collect? How does that work for you guys? And I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that question.
No, that's a fair question. So, we are, we assess a percentage on net collection. I think it's me at this point. A percentage on net collection. So, the payment comes in, if there's a refund...
Can we get the guys from the AV department? Oh, sorry.
If you turn it upside down.
Upside down.
There's a switch on the bottom.
There's a switch on the bottom, underneath.
Underneath. Yeah. There you go. You're like John.
Testing. Hey! Actually, it worked. It does. So, our, we assess a percentage on net collection, so if the, that means we won't get paid unless the squad gets paid. We have to actually work for our money. And if we have to refund something, we would refund any fee that we had previously been paid on that amount. So, that ensures that they get the performance that they need, and they also are able to monitor our performance through a whole host of sort of online reports and eyes into the system to make sure that we're doing our job.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Yep. Just two, they should be pretty easy questions. A couple times, you referenced three invoices. What happens after three invoices?
So, right now, if no one pays after the three, like, we're talking about non-residents, basically, we request a payment, the account gets written off. There are, there's no sending people to collections at this point in the process. The plan is to roll the program out, evaluate it, see how it's working, and then assess whether or not it makes sense to deploy a collection agency process on those accounts.
Okay, but right now, there's no collections?
That's correct.
Okay. Basically, working on goodwill?
Correct. Yes. Yes, true.
We just don't want to jump into something like that right off the bat. We gotta see where we're at, we gotta look at this for like a year.
Yep.
See what our meeting comment is.
Then, earlier in the presentation, you referenced there was a payment plans.
Yes.
Who is the recipient of, if you're on a payment plan, who gets the money? Is that sent to you?
Yep. So, the way it's set up is typically, a patient would call our office and say, I have a bill, or like, or we would potentially call them and say, how can I get this paid off? And we would give them options to pay it off. Usually, it's in installments. The way you typically handle that is, we try to get it paid off all at once, and if they can't do it, then you basically work back from that point and create an installment plan. And we can set that up automatically for them, or they could go on every month and take care of that. And we say it's interest-free, there's, this isn't about trying to get the most money out of people. It's about making it as seamless and painless as possible. So, that's really how that's set up. Typically, a payment plan lasts less than six months.
Okay. I guess my point at is that the squad doesn't have to worry about that. You're gonna handle that.
We handle everything. What we ask for from them is solid documentation that we can use to bill from, and then, we do everything else, and then, we provide service to them so that they know what we're doing, we're talking, we're meeting. We're very hands-on in that sense.
Good. Great. Totally has. Thank you.
Yep, sure.
Any other questions?
I just had a quick comment. I wanted to thank the squad for such a thoughtful and well-presented presentation. And also, you know, Don, you did a great job saying it's not gonna cost the residents or the borough anything right off the bat, so we could sit back and relax and enjoy the presentation. I was just wondering, though, what's the gap that you're looking to make up? So, I mean, I really appreciate you looking at all the options to benefit the most people. So, will, are you looking for a pretty decent percentage of influx to come in? So, you're not getting anything now, and you'll get a certain percentage back from the insurance going forward?
Our expectations is that we're gonna get, you know, it's gonna be a significant amount of money.
Right.
For, because we do, last year, we had like 860 calls, 70, 870 calls.
I was wondering that, yeah.
So, if you take out, like, there's like 100, how many fire calls did you have, Steve? 150?
125.
125 fire calls. If we didn't treat anybody, we're not getting paid for them, so you deduct them off the top.
Right.
The RMA is, which is like refuse medical attention, where you go out there and you don't do anything, you're not gonna, well, right now, we're not paying, we're not charging for that. Other towns do.
Right.
And it's something we may have to explore in the future. So, if you take those off, if you're like, if you have 600 calls that are billable, and let's say you get a 400 bucks apiece, you know, at least we could buy an ambulance every couple of years, which we can't do right now.
Right.
Because we're way below where we need to be, and we still have to make it till May, until money starts coming back in.
Right. Right.
And this process isn't gonna start like tomorrow. We're in the process now because we have to go through the aggravation of going to the State Department of Health and being licensed in order to perform this billing. So, there's lettering that has to be done on the ambulances, there's a lot of paperwork that we have to submit. So, we're probably a few months away from ever submitting our first claim. And they have to come and inspect all the vehicles, which I don't foresee a problem with that, but it's a long process, and we've been at it for close to a year already, so...
That's great.
We just can't leave the money on the table anymore.
Right.
And I really, I don't like coming here and asking for more money, more money, more money.
Right.
So, I think that we'll be able to, we'll be able to be good with the amount of money that we're getting right now from the borough to cover that tax waiver stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm hopeful about that.
That's great. I really appreciate you doing all this due diligence.
Yeah, and we wanted the right message to get out there. That's why we're taking so long, and it's on TV, like, as many residents as possible. And we have full intentions, I told Mrs. Goodwin, that we're gonna go to the senior center as well.
Good.
Answer a lot more questions, I'm sure.
Great.
But just to put everybody at ease.
No, and the service that you give to the town is invaluable and greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? What do you need from us at this point?
Kind of a promissory note that we're gonna still get our money. Because that's part of what makes it happen for the residents, that's not gonna...
Okay. Gentlemen, well, thank you very much for the presentation, and we look forward to seeing it to run ad nauseam on Channel 15, Russ. Thank you. Perhaps we can cut it down into a special presentation that you could, you can get run on the loop, so they don't have to sit through all the meetings. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we're gonna get back to the next part of our meeting. Next on the agenda, while you folks are cleaning up, is review of the rules of council. Next on the agenda is review of the rules of council. It was my intent to sit and read through the entire rules of council this evening, but I think we're gonna bypass that. There are a number of points, though, I wish to hit to kind of underscore to, as a reminder to myself and to the borough council members, some of the rules of the council that we have to abide by. I don't know if you have your copies this evening. Did we get copies to the...
Yep, everyone has a copy.
Everyone has it?
The rules in front of them tonight.
Okay. If you go to the second page, section six. "The council of the borough of Milltown shall organize itself into six departments. Each department shall be under the direction of a committee of three members appointed by the president of the council, who shall designate a chairperson of each committee. Said departments shall be advisory to the mayor and council, shall be organized and charged by administration as follows." The main part of that that I want to underscore is, departments shall be advisory to the mayor and council. What this means is that the committees and/or the chairman of those committees meet to discuss items to make recommendations to the full council. The committee does not make decisions. The decisions are made only by the full vote of the council. So, because you're the chairman of the committee, doesn't mean you run the committee. Okay? This leads to the next point, which is that no council members run any department of the borough. Okay? They're run by paid employees, all who which report directly to the business administrator sitting there. Again, all council persons are advisory. They work with the department heads, and they serve as liaisons between the residents and the borough employees and department heads. They serve as advocates for their respective committees. Council people are more legislators, and they are not department managers. Okay? Again, decisions are made by a full council vote and not a committee. Reason I'm bringing up this point is for several reasons, but the main one is this. I don't want any member of the council to think, because they might not be the chairman of their favorite committee, or a member of a committee that they have an interest in, that their voice is not gonna be heard. Okay? That's not the intent. The intent is that the committee can get together, they can meet, they can discuss things, and they can bring their ideas to full committee. The full council makes the decisions, not one person or three people. It's voted on by six. Okay? With that, I'd like to move down further on into section seven. "General duties and powers and functions of a standing committee." Okay? Administer the activities and matters for which it has been given primary responsibility. Perform such additional acts and duties as may be assigned to it by the mayor and council. Report to the council concerning the activities and matters assigned to it. Here's another one that's important. Make recommendations to the council concerning the activities and matters assigned to it. Again, it makes recommendations to the full council, not the final decisions. And I'd like to add another point to that, and I'd like to see more of it happen in the future. Sometime in the distant past, it would happen occasionally, but I think it's really important that I would like to say that a responsible committee, a responsible council person, and particularly a chairman, will present, when speaking to the full council, a majority and a minority report. Okay? I want to see points of view that are from, say, you have three people on a committee. Two people say, oh, we think this is the way to go. When they come to the council, I want to hear both sides of it. I want to hear what the majority had to say, and I hope that the minority council person who might have a point of view, I want their position to be stated. I want it to be heard. Because the other three council people might not have been at that meeting, might not have gotten minutes from it. It's important that every person that you've elected to put up here has their voice heard, whether they're in the minority of the decision-making or in the majority or the minority. I think their time is valuable, and I want to hear what they gotta say. So, that's putting the rules of council for a reason. Okay? This is six people making a decision, not one, not two, not three. Okay? Another thing I want to bring up is, under section eight. Committee meetings shall be held, if possible, on either the first or third Monday of the month. Okay? This was done in the past, okay, for a reason. And the reason is being is that council people can count on Monday nights, every Monday night, to be a washout at home. Figure you're gonna be in a meeting. You're gonna be at a council meeting, or you're gonna be at a committee meeting. I would ask the council to please schedule, if you can, your committee meetings on Monday nights, and this way, the council knows ahead of time, Monday nights are gonna be a little dicey. I'm not gonna have a meet with residents on Monday nights, I'm gonna figure I'm gonna be here. I think that's gonna be better government for us here in Milltown. I know that there's times where sometimes you have professionals that need to be there, so you might need to have a meeting during the day. Please reach out to your council people on your committee to let them know at least a week ahead of time, if you can, when your committee meeting is gonna be, so they can make every effort to be there. And please, keep notes at your committee meetings and share them with the people on the committee that may not have made it. on the committee that may not have made it. Again, you gotta remember, folks in town put six of you here, they wanna hear from all six of you. So, I would ask that we please do that. And, let's see if I had something else in here. Oh, on a final note. All of you on council have been given various committees and commissions to be liaison I know when you come to the meetings, there's generally a report generated by your department head, or someone working in the department, that you read at the council meeting. And that's great. But we're not getting all of the information from all the committees and commissions you may be sitting on. So please, when you go to these meetings, take notes, bring them back, and share the information, so the full council can hear it. And I'm gonna tell you why I'm bringing this up tonight. Okay? I love this town, and I love the government that we have here. I was not elected czar. I don't wanna be the supreme person who makes the decisions this year. I'd love to see the council members reaching out to each other, working together, and sharing information, and try to build consensus. I would love to make it so I don't have to make one tiebreaker, one decision, because it means more to me to see you folks work together than it does for me to think of that I have an ego because I'm making decisions. It's not like that at all. You know, it would be so much easier to sit here and do it all myself, but it wouldn't be nice. So, let's get all together, let's share the information, let's work together, and get this stuff done, ladies and gentlemen. So that's all I have for rules of council. Next, we have miscellaneous engineering items. Mr. McClellan, CME Associates.
Yes, Mr. Thank you. Just one quick item tonight. Included in your agenda this evening is a letter from our office recommending final acceptance of the demolition at 50 Washington Avenue, approval of close-out changer which reduces the contract amount by $123,000, and final payment, final payment to the contractor subsequent posting of the maintenance guarantee, amount of 5%.
Good.
That's all I have, sir.
Any questions for the engineer? Could you repeat that last part again?
Sure.
We're talking to the residents about saving money, and it's nice to know that we saved a little more than anticipated on this contract.
Yeah, the contract was reduced by $123,000.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, could I just ask you, how did we just make such a big saving on that?
The contract included contingencies in there for unforeseen's that were potentially gonna happen in any demolition contract. We did have some, not as many as we thought we could have. The other thing we did not do was spend a lot of money on topsoil because of the fact that there's a new construction going on, and we saved a considerable sum in there. So, in terms of placing fill and putting in topsoil, there's some savings there, but the bulk of it was because of contingencies.
Okay. Well, with that, actually, Randy bringing up a good point, the, when it comes to the topsoil, then, is that gonna be a line item that needs to be added to the future DPW and fire facility?
No, because the bulk of the site's gonna be paved when it's done, the buildings and pavement. These areas where the old building was were similar, where the new pavement and all the, your basic facility on there.
Okay.
So, it should not be offset. This money, though, will be used, it can be used to offset the cost of the unforeseen tank that we found. So basically, that's probably gonna wash, but net, it's a positive for you.
So the tank's not included in this?
Tank is not included. Tank was not removed, tank was left in. It's inside your project for the new project.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll open up for audience comments. Please remember, state your name and address, the microphone is in the center of the room. Please limit your remarks to things stated at the agenda meeting. With that, I'll open the public portion.
Margaret O'Donnell, 81 Coolthaw Avenue. I noted that residents were described as taxpayers, and I heard Councilman Legati's question about renters, but what about businesses? They pay a significant amount of tax in town as well?
What's that? I'm sorry?
What about businesses?
Businesses?
They pay a significant amount of tax as well.
We'll have to ask them. Sharon, do you know anything? Or, Don, do you know anything in regards to that? I think the question would be, if a, if a business owner was in town and had a mishap, would they be treated as a, as a resident, as a taxpayer?
I would think so.
You wanna come up to the mic, come up to the microphone?
I'll show.
Because you're renting property, right, so that would form...
Yeah, I would think so, if they're, if they're in the, if they're in place of business.
Right, because either they own the business, or they're renting the business, so they would be a taxpayer.
Thank you.
I can't say the same for customers, but I think...
Very good question, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the audience comments and accept a motion for adjournment.
Take the motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilman Revelinsky. Will the clerk please, oh, is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revelinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. We'll adjourn for about five minutes. Figure eight o'clock, we'll be back.